Hello, I'm Hannah from the Lethbridge Transparency Council and I'm here interviewing Harold Perversif to talk about his city council candidacy. So, welcome Harold.
Well, thank you very much Hannah. A pleasure to be here in my home.
Yeah. It is really nice. Um, so in full transparency, I would like to just note that Harold was a previous member of the Board of the Lethbridge Transparency Council. He has stepped down in place to run his candidacy. But as a disclosure, before we begin the interview, I will put that out there. But again, thank you Harold for doing this interview with me and we'll just jump right in with the first question here. So what do you think needs improvement in the processes of city council and administration and how would you make these improvements?
Thank you Hannah. The processes at city council and the administration are bureaucratic to say the least. It's very difficult sometimes to get the attention of council. As a resident or a business. They have a process in place right now, which is called the Agenda Review Committee. So before you can even set foot in city council, you have to go ahead and advise them that you have an issue or issues that you want to bring before council. And then they look at that. There's a review committee that consists of the mayor, a couple of the councillors and the city clerk. And for some reason, they may just decide that they don't want to hear from you and they refuse to go to council. And on the other hand, if they accept your agenda, they will ask you for full disclosure of what you're going to present, which is fair. But it's difficult and some people, you know, they have to get the form, they have to get the process through and it's, it's just not worth it. That's one thing with council that I would, you know, certainly want to address. I believe that every resident and business would have an opportunity to come before council, basically impromptu. Being orderly and respectful of council in the process and state their position. That's not unlike other municipalities, they allow that. And Lethbridge for some reason has this agenda review committee before he can go through. With respect to administration, you look at the organizational chart that we have. This is bureaucracy in the definition. There are more management directors and just basic staff in there that has this monopoly of people. And granted, they did try to trim their staff in light of reducing costs. And we're very well aware that one or two people have complained about being cut or being terminated. And city administration give their job back. So it kind of wondered where the process really goes. With respect to the direct relationship between the administration and city council. There's a perception, and I don't think it's absolutely incorrect, that administration runs the city. They come to council administrators, managers with these graphs and maps and shiny little displays. And they entice the councillors. And I mean, there's a wealth of information that goes into any project or any planning that goes forth. And all of a sudden now council is faced with making a decision on behalf of all the citizens of Lethbridge on what administration wants to do. Sometimes it's a very rapid process that gets passed and it's a knee jerk reaction from council to approve some of the projects that are presented. And you know, there has to be more discussion at all levels before administration moves forth. Now, as you mentioned, I was a member of the Transparency Council, but even as a private citizen, if you want to get information from administration, you sometimes get, you get a run around. And it just from one person or one department to the next. And we've had to go with actual requests out of the Privacy Act for information. And even then, the disclosures are blacked out. For conflict reasons they state. And it just doesn't give that transparency or that description of what's really going on behind the scenes. And I believe strongly that that's not how we want to have a governance in administration. And I would work every angle to straighten that out. Personally, I built two homes here for my own dwelling in Lethbridge and I did a lot of the work myself with respect to getting permits. And once again, that was a difficult process to go through. The processes are, an average person can't do it on their own. Let's put it that way. You need, you need support and help and that shouldn't be the case. We should have an approachable administration. So thank you Hannah. I think that's all I could say about those two things.
Yeah, I know certainly as elected representatives, you, you want to be open to hear the public's feedback. So that's a, that's a really good comment that you made there. What recommendations would you make to engage more citizens in the city's municipal development plan and process?
Well, the process for the MDP of course is a 10 year project. And the last one started two years before, so in 2019. And I understand that the city had 125 target groups that they had involved in it. And is that enough or do we need more? I think more is better than less when it comes to vision for our city. And how can they engage people? Well, I think just open communication once again and putting it out there that this is what we're doing. We're building a vision for our community 10 years into the future, or actually longer into the future. But let's start with the 10 years under the MDP. With respect to the process of, you know, when you have that process and you have that input, then you're not really, you're not really limiting out of the box ideas. Okay? And I'm, I was impressed with the target groups that they had. They brought the First Nations people in as well. And it was well rounded. So I think people need to be aware that what the city's doing with the MDP. I mean, of course it's mandated by the Municipal Government Act and it is a bylaw. And it can be changed, of course, in the courses, but people who have an interest, businesses or, you know, institutions, they should be welcome at all points in time to, to contribute. And like I say, it's basically a two-year process that they plan to, to develop these plans and you know, we're looking at eight years, so well beyond a term should I get elected here. So I won't be specifically involved at that point to solicit the, the inputs there, but communication is always key.
Yeah, especially in the context of the MDP.
I think it's around what 300 pages or something like that, 275 pages or something. I don't know. It's huge.
It is very huge. So what do you think the top three issues are in our community and what do you plan to do to address these issues?
The top three? Well, that's a no brainer nationally. We have a crime situation here in Lethbridge. We're identified nationally and the crime index is being number one. And you know, it's a situation that's, it affects business, it affects our institutions, it affects our residents, our communities. If you were to select a place to move to or to call home and you did any reference checking on Google or even, yeah, any, any frames of reference, you probably would be hesitant to say that Lethbridge is a great place to come to, just based on that. So number one, of course, would be safety of the community and our, our city. Number two, taxes. Taxation in Lethbridge is out of control. We have been the second highest rated tax people in the province, time and time again. Grand Prairie has been number one and greatly so. I mean, it's a newer city and there's a lot of infrastructure in that. But Lethbridge, it's the tax and spend, spend and tax routine. And we're not going to get ourselves out of it until there's some drastic changes. And thirdly, and maybe it should be the first one, but thirdly is the very seat I'm running for council, administration and our governance. Basically, if we have good governance, the issues of the community are taken care of. Council will recognize these issues, council will address these issues. And therefore that is a huge issue for our community. If we don't have leadership and direction and sound judgment at city council, then we may as well pack up our toys and leave because it's not going to get better. So I strive to ensure that we have good leadership and we have good direction for our city.
Yeah, the best laid plans certainly need a good, a good driver of that ship. So that's certainly very important. What would you want the city to do to create a good environment for business in Lethbridge?
Well, the city of Lethbridge has, I guess, the businesses that we have here are varied, which is very nice. I mean, we have a good variety of businesses that can, the consumers can go to. But let's make those businesses accessible. Okay? The downtown core that we have and we're trying to sustain through the business revitalization program. Why have parking meters downtown? Why should people have to pay for parking and risk getting a ticket when they're running into one of the local businesses there? You go to any mall, you go to any of the big box stores and that, it's all free parking. You know, and okay, so there's going to be abuse. Is that what you're going to say? People are going to just park there because they work downtown and whatever. Well, you know, maybe that might be the case. But it's still, there should be accessibility for people to, to, to get to these businesses. Let's look at business licensing as well for people that want to start up a business, make that a little bit better process. Give them some tax breaks if they're starting up something new. And mostly the city of Lethbridge can promote a shop at home, do business at home environment. Promoting that shop at home and it should stop, should start, I should say, with the city. When the city starts needing processes or facilities to be updated and renovated or concrete to be laid, let's have the city, excuse me. Let's have the city shop at home first and support our local businesses. Contracting, major projects and everything as well. Let's develop that part of it there. Let's get out of the box for advertising for businesses. Let them do some innovative advertising to attract their businesses without restraint. I know right now there's signed bylaws and all this kind of stuff. Some businesses have opportunities of doing the outdoor dining, which maybe in this case with the masking and everything is, is something that is more, you know, people don't want to be confined in an open area. Allow them to do the sidewalk annexing for periods of time and that, you know, with all due respect, with, with, with common sense involved as well. But attracting new business to Lethbridge is important. And once again, I reflect back on the fact of having a safe community and an open community. Businesses aren't going to come to Lethbridge if they figure, well, we're going to have to be patrolling it 24 hours a day so that we're not broken into or there's issues there too. So I think we have a good start with the businesses in Lethbridge. I think we have a good variety. We'd still like the, some of the market stores that are available around us in Calgary and stuff like that, but guess what? They're still accessible in our, in our community here and in some respect, we can, we can get everything we want. I don't think I have to go too far to, to purchase the anxiety to survive.
Yeah, we certainly have a really good diversity of businesses in Lethbridge and I know that there's lots of different suggestions of how to deal with that. So there's lots of different, different ways to work with that. Um, in the most recent MDP process, what decisions did you agree with and what decisions did you disagree with?
Well, in the last MDP project there, like I said, it was two years in the making. I read through a lot of it, not all of it. There's a lot of history involved, a huge amount of history, which is important. I mean, where we were and where we're going is, is important there. And it's visionary. And once again, it can be changed, amended, but at this point in time, that's a bylaw and as mandated by the Municipal Government Act, it's in place. And kudos to Lethbridge for putting together such a comprehensive and extensive document. With respect to, the, I guess the nuts and bolts of the, of the, of the, of the MDP. I'm in favor of the direction they're taking with respect to the connection between transportation and the communities. We've got to get to and from where we are, where we're living, where we reside and where we work. And that means like roadways, effective transportation, back and forth. And so I'm, I, that's one of the things that impressed me that they've identified. The urban growth as well, they've addressed that. We don't want to need urban sprawl. I mean, Lethbridge is kind of unique because there's lots of area to expand. We've got lots of land around us. But you know, density is important and, and you know, because the more, the more we expand, the more infrastructure we need for sewer, water, transportation needs, busing and all this kind of things as well. And over and over and above that, one of the things that they addressed as well was the affordable housing. And definitely needed. Once again, I don't believe that not attainable. And you know, visionary as well. I mean, affordable housing can take very many different aspects. It can be single dwelling or multiple homes or apartments, townhouses, things like that. And those initiatives I believe are stellar in, in that plan. But disagreeing with the MDP, I, you know, I, I think that there was a lot of work put into it. I believe that the stakeholders were hurt. And like once again, it's not, it's a living document at this point in time. And as far as the positive vision, it's, it's there and I do agree with it in, in, in principle, yes.
Perfect. So you were talking earlier about transportation and infrastructure development. So how would you prioritize transportation for the future in Lethbridge?
Well, transportation is important for any community and urban center. Now, Lethbridge is somewhat unique in the fact that we're separated by a river. And we only have the two basic ways of getting from one end to the other. And the third, the third bridge has been on the agenda for, I guess, 20 years now. And, and every year it increases in cost. It's time. It's time for a third bridge in Lethbridge. The reasons are very clear. Our current bridge handles 50,000 vehicles per day, per average. And the Alberta transportation and sources indicate that 60,000 would pretty well be the max for our bridge for the Whup Up Drive. So basically, we're there, we're, we're getting up to that limit. And their expected growth, I think Lethbridge's west side is around 34,000. But we get traveled from both sides. There's people now coming, there's more amenities on the west side here. The ATB Corvadere Centre, the high schools, some of the shopping as well. So there's traffic both ways. At one point in time, it was everybody from the west side could beady go over to the, to the east side to work and go to school and that. So that's changed. And with more growth and more expansion with residencies and on the west side, we do need it. And I was here in Lethbridge when we had that fire that came through from the, from the west. And it was so bad that basically didn't know what to do. And in those cases of emergency, which could arise at any time, how do you get out? How do you, where do you go? And we know very well that for Whup Up Drive is, is not going to accommodate every vehicle of 30,000 residents, 34,000 residents in Lethbridge here. So third bridge is, is definitely a need. One of the things that they identified in the, in the MDP there was the fact of the, the ranking of the, of the transportation. And they ranked the pedestrians as number one, bicycling two and kind of down, you know what? Recreationally wise, I, I, I tend to agree, but I mean, people don't walk across the river, across the bridge to work, over to school. You know, and all seasons and all that, nor do they bicycle. You know, single vehicles, you know, are, are the order of the day at this point in time. And you know, it's, it's at this time anyway, I mean, down the road, things could change. And busing is important as well. So.
So moving on to this last, last section here, where do you think the city should be spending more money?
Well, the city, again, I identified taxation. Okay. So I don't like the word more money. I like the word of appropriating the existing money we have and that we will be able to manage with. But infrastructure is number one, absolutely. There's areas of the city here that need upgrading with their water sewers. You know, they're like, some of them are maybe 80 years old, you know, in the, in the northern parts of the town. And they, they collapse, they, they break down and it causes a huge issue for the, oh, my phone again. This is crazy. So, oh my gosh, there we go. I should have had that all completed and I thought I did. So with respect to that, it, once the sewer and the waters break down, then it puts the communities into hardship. Then residents are faced without water and whatever and whatever. So the city has to start maintaining and they are to a certain extent working towards replacing and refurbishing those areas there to keep them going. Our roadways are always important regardless if you are a resident of Lethbridge or if you're just passing through. We need good roads, good services and well signage, things like that. Social services and community projects are important as well. We have to keep the community safe in all respects, well lit areas. Communities that are going to be able to be sustainable as well. So that money is well spent and we need to, we need to continue in that respect.
So I seemed excited to talk about where we can cut spending. So I'd love to hear about that.
Well, that's interesting Hannah, very good question. Over the course of a number of years, the city has taken the approach that they can't make decisions on their own, like administration. They want to go ahead and get formalized reports from who knows who. And who will review our situation here and then make recommendations to them. And then they, you know, put those processes through. Sometimes those are cost cutting measures and other times they're cost increasing measures. And I'm just going to reflect on one of those reports. And that was the Kessler Report that was done prior to the implementation of the waste and recycling project here in Lethbridge. And that report indicated a lot of suggestions to the city and that. But guess what? Those people were from Florida. You know, they produced the situation for Lethbridge. They didn't take into consideration things like our wind, you know, our climates. The fact that, you know, in the summertime, your garbage can is going to attract maggots. All this kind of stuff. So you know, the management of, of the city in administration, you know, there's directors, there's managers, they should be able to present reports and affect cost cutting and efficiency in all respects. The Keep PMG report, which was done as well on a review, it came back and guess what? We haven't been following it at all respects. They've, they've indicated a lot of areas where we could cut back. And there's some huge cutbacks that could be made. The city should not be involved in, in a lot of the things that they are, private industry, private contractors. And then once again, I'll reflect back on the, on the waste and recycle. They literally put three businesses out of work when they took over the, the recycling project to do curbside recycling. And they didn't compensate these people at all. They just dumped them out of the, out of the system and took over with the system. And of course, it was huge. The waste and recycling that they're going to proceed with or they're intending to is the, the green box. And once again, they want to take this on and we're talking huge amounts of money for the facility and for that action. And is it really needed? I mean, and if it is, if some people want it, well, why don't they have a user pay? And instead of trying to implement this one shoe fits all, and it doesn't in this case. We've got a huge amount of senior citizens who still want to stay in their own home. And they don't even have garbage to put out every week, you know, recycling, let alone composting. And if they hasn't composting, guess what? Usually they have a little garden in the back and they can do their own composting. So those are two areas at least that I can respect on. Diversing of, divesting of items like say, even, even the NMAX, you know, city operated, city controlled. Huge revenue. We've just built, spent lots of money on renovating it. You know, private industry, private business can, you know, conduct those kinds of things as well. So we have to look at that. Divesting of our resource. And whenever we take on a project or a building or, you know, a program, it costs money to administer, it costs money to upkeep. And it, that's, that's a drain on the city in general.
So yeah, there's certainly lots of recommendations there. So what criteria do you recommend the city examine prior to approving these large capital projects?
Need and the sustainability of the projects. There's a lot of wants out there Hannah, Hannah. And the, the city has to be very cautious, particularly at this time that we're in. And we will be for, I consider a period of time with this COVID situation. There's not going to be money from federal, there's not going to be money from municipal, I should say provincial to attract the municipal programs. There's just, there just won't, there's no, there's, there's a limit to the amount of money. And you can be sure that the federal government is going to be trying to recoup where they've lost and have to support the society in general across the country. So we have to be prudent, respectful. And yet, yeah, we have to be progressive in certain areas, but it can't be the shiny penny. We don't need the shiny pennies here at this point in time. There's been a lot of decisions and a lot of expenditures in the recent past that the city has, has done. And they fallen flat on their face. What about the self-cleaning toilets downtown? How long do those last? You know, and I mean, $200,000, I think they were a piece. Once again, the, the parking meter situation downtown, I mean, that's a Vancouver, Toronto where you have these mobile units going around and flashing license plates and, and, and these meters that are in place down there. Cost wise, you know, what, what was better? Was it better to have a commissioner on the street with boots on the ground, so to speak? Or, or the new system? And at a great cost to the community. And you know, it could go on and on. The camera on the Whup Up Drive that's supposed to tell you how, how it has to go and how it has not to go, which software does it work or is not reading properly or whatever? Those things, you know, like I said, they're the shiny penny things and, and really not needed. I would be watching for those things all along. And then lobby groups that come in and requesting money and funding and that. You know, we have to use discretion, greater discretion. We don't have a money tree growing at city hall and that money tree is basically coming out of the pockets of the taxpayers. And once again, our taxation is out of hand. So.
Yeah, money for these projects definitely has to come from somewhere. So that's a, that's a good point. So our last question here is just looking at the capital improvement program and plan for the next couple of years. What expenses are you in favor of and what expenses are you not?
Well, once again, the capital improvement plan is progressive. And yeah, for overall, it's, it's visionary. But there are some items in there that I fully endorse. And one of them, of course, is the relocation of the fire hall number three on the south side. That facility right now is 60 years old. And it really, at the point in time, it was on the more extreme south part of the city, but not anymore. And I certainly endorse that. I would, I would certainly stand behind moving forward with. And I certainly endorse that. I would, I would certainly stand behind moving forward with relocating the, the fire hall. The other issue that I'm impressed with is the initiative for affordable housing in our community. And once again, I full support for that. And as I mentioned previously, a couple of the ones that I would not be in favor of at this point in time. Would be the organics, the organic bins that are being complimented, complimented. Contemplated in the CIP. And the SAG update, the Southern Alberta Art Gallery upgrade that they're looking at. Six million dollars. Once again, the facility is, is older. But sustainable, basically. A major upgrade to that is, is, is huge and a draw on the, on the, on the coffers of the city. And at this point in time, in the CIP, that would be one thing I would not be proceeding with. There's other things that I'm happy about and other ones that I'm not, but you asked for a couple of them and there they are.
Thank you. And thank you so much for, for doing this interview, Harold. Is there anything you'd like to add or let people know how they can get in touch with you?
Well, thank you, Hannah. Once again, thank you for this huge effort that you're doing with contacting the candidates and allowing them to. Speak. And with respect to myself, Harold Perversif, this is my second, well, my third actually. But opportunity of trying to vie for city council. And I have been busy on the community front. With respect to a lot of issues. And I've been active in the community for thirty years, thirty five years since we moved in here. President of the Lethbridge Planning Society, as you said, prior member of the Lethbridge Transparency Council. Member of the Community Governance Committee. I've, don't make any apologies for being involved with protests and. Gatherings at city hall and other places to discuss issues. I'm very frustrated by some of the things that have gone on in, in our local community here. It's a shame that the members have to assemble on city hall to even bring attention to council. And the, the mayor about issues in the community. And of all the times that I've been there, never once has a councillor or a mayor come out to address those crowds. And to me, that's not governance at all. And that's not going to be Harold sitting there at city council. I will be out there in the community. You have my assurance on that. You could reach me at my phone number, four zero three, three three zero, six one one nine. Or you could reach me at my Facebook page. I don't have a website, but Facebook is simply Harold Perversif. And I look forward to your vote on October the eighteenth. And if you have any questions, please give me a call. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
You're very welcome, Hannah, and all the best to you and this huge project you're taking. Thank you.